And first on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
Maybe we've lost our lights. There we go.
That's not going to jump us.
No, it wasn't Max. It wasn't for effect.
No, okay. I think it might have been for effect. All right. Public hearings. A public hearing for a liquor license for Les Kraus. Good business as Riverside Billiards.
I'd really be open to a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I would just like to say that there have been no reported problems or anything with this license.
Is there any public comments on the Riverside Billiards? Hearing none? Somebody like to make a motion to close up here?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Katie?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion on a renewal of the liquor license for Les Kraus and Riverside Billiards?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The presentation for the Sproul Block Historical Kiosk, I guess, has been postponed.
So Ron Phillips called me and he did not have a chance to talk to Jean. So he asked to be moved to the next meeting. When he asked me to be put on, I guess he was planning on talking to her and then he didn't get a chance to talk to her. So that's why it's not on.
Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Bob? I have one if it's okay with everybody. And that is that Ruben Mahar is here this evening and he's going to testify pertaining to LD 920. And part of that testimony is a request of support from this board to support the testimony. And I'd like just to add that as 11.2 to the agenda if that's okay. Under real difference.
Does anybody object to that?
I'm fine.
Something like to make a motion to add that?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, Max.
Any discussion?
Could you add more chairs?
Hearing none? All those in favor? We'll add that to the agenda. LD number was that, Bob?
LD 920.
Moving right along. Citizens' comments.
If everybody can kind of like stay the six feet, if you can come forward, there's more room up here, that would be great. Yeah. I don't know. I think that's so Katie can hear everybody in the audience.
Yeah, I just want to...
Do you want to go up to the lectern?
To the lectern. Or else they can't hear.
I just want to...
Could you state your name just so...
I'm sorry, Seth Hall. Waldorf Anderson. Excuse me, I just ran in because I was late. I just wanted to share a little sort of interesting news. And it's not secret proprietary, but it's sort of fun. The Maine Shellfish Developers, of which I'm involved with up at the Arch Building at the Environmental Business Park, George Seaver's place, has, to the best of our knowledge, for the first time this past week, introduced live-growing oysters into synthetic seawater tanks. And we're starting trials to grow oysters away from the shore. It's, as a fishing community for a long time, it seems like aquaculture is maybe the future. And we should be thinking and a lot about it and supporting it. And I just think it's exciting news in the town. It's, this is the same fellow who came to the town a couple of years ago, Tapp Prior. He has a company called Maine Shellfish Developers that's got some good grant funding. And it's just really good news for Waldorf, as far as I can see. It's our future.
Cool. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Any slugwood comments? Bob, you got any?
I do, but I don't want to feel Bill Maxwell's thunder, but the Historical Society is having an event in April. It's on Facebook. It's an in-house yard sale. And I just wanted that to draw... I wanted to say that to draw people's attention. Thank you, Bob. You must like your pens and pencils and crayons.
That was a good one, Billy.
Is that it, Bob? Colonel? Nothing to go there. Jan?
I don't have much, but I have a question for Bill. Is the calendar for the Historical Society on our website?
I'm working on it. I'm getting everything to Tanya.
Okay.
I have a question and it was answered. And I just got to give her all the information.
Well, I always, I get the newsletter and then it disappears. So I have...
Well, it's on our Facebook page too, under events, as Bob will tell you. And read the whole event. Don't read partial of it.
The thing that says "more" at the bottom of it.
Click the "more."
Bob has a habit of not clicking "more."
Clicking "more," okay.
I didn't do that and I got "go for it."
Oh, okay. So I will remember to click the "more" on that. Thank you.
You all set, Jan?
Yeah.
Katie, you got anything?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay. Just want to move on. Town Minister Report.
On April 7th, and the time is to be determined, we're going to do another box food, box giveaway with the Lincoln County Food Initiative. We're going to change it a little bit because we know the last time it was backed up onto Route 1. So this time we're going to come in and go around the building so that there's not a backup on Route 1. And also, there's been a lot of chatter about townwide cleanup days. So that's posted on, that'll be posted on our calendar. I know Will Pratt is a huge proponent of that, along with our Shellfish Warden. And those days are days when the shellfish harvesters typically go out and they clean the shoreland.
Use the same dates?
We're using the same dates and we're just making those a townwide cleanup so that if people want to clean up, they can take their bags. And it really doesn't matter what time, but the truck will be at the Pine Street Landing and that's where you can take all of your trash that you've picked up. And Justin, the Shellfish Warden, Katie and Jan, has requested that you two set up the table and run it as you did last year. So if you could help with registration, that would be lovely.
Sure, we have the dates on that.
I do not have them because I can't get them on my phone at the moment, but I will make sure everybody has them. And they will be posted on the website with the times. There was just, Justin had a problem with one date, with the time, start time. So he read PM instead of AM. And I was like, well, we're not going to be out at 10:00 PM picking up trash. So, but it'll be put on the website and on Facebook.
Okay, cool. Consent calendar. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business, the Wagner Bridge replacement.
Wagner Bridge, number two, bridge replacement is going to occur finally. And this is Winslow's Mill Road over Hoke Brook. So that will be happening. We just have to let you know, let them know, all the public know it's happening. The DOT will also be posting notices. But this is just allowing the over-limit permit and the bonding for the state because technically they may begin construction while our roads are posted. So I just need you to vote that you would allow overweight vehicles to replace the bridge.
So they have, did they put a date in here? I didn't see a date, an actual date of starting.
The date that they have given us is anywhere from April 1st to October 1st.
So I didn't see a different date.
So that's the best, that's the best we could do.
Bob? Did we ask them to bond on that first one that they did, the roads that they theoretically might tear up?
What bond? Which project?
We have to write as a town to post a bond. They recommend $14,000 a mile to reimburse us in case there are overweight trucks go on our roads and chew them up.
We have never asked for that bond in the past.
Okay, just asking.
And John, when he read this, said that it's their road they're going to be on and only a little bit onto Wagner Bridge.
Okay.
So that was his, any roads they'd be on would be state roads. And we don't have jurisdiction over those.
So you want us to make a motion to just grant them...
Permission.
Permission. Would somebody like to make a motion on that?
I move that we allow overweight vehicles to support bridge work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Ruben, you are up.
Oh, joy. All day I've been thinking, you know, having gone in front of a select board, these people can come in for a while. So thanks for letting me cross that off my list today. I'm here to talk about and to support something called LD 920. And this is a real exciting name on this bill. So if any of you are tired, this is going to wake you right up. It is an act to promote oversight and competitive parity among video service providers.
Right.
So this bill is really about cable TV and satellite TV and TV service that's provided in the area and having sort of a balanced ground. And it's a great problem to solve. It's a hard problem to solve. I think it's a late problem to solve. Anything you subscribe to these days, most of the planet, is all digital and really about broadband. So the short version, what we're going to ask them to do is to take this and shift the focus from just video services to broadband. Instead of only collecting things like franchise fees just on TV service, it would be data service because everything is a data service now. And that can be used to leverage future technologies and to move us further. Waldorf has done a really great job expanding fiber into a lot of the town. We're by no means done. I think a lot of us are painfully aware of that, but we've gotten further than a lot of other places. Properly leveraged, LD 920 could do a lot to really expand these networks so we can all work from home. We can all get our health care from home. We can all get our education from home. We can do business from home. We can watch all the Star Trek from home. It's me, it's what I do. That is probably the super-ternicated version of what I'm up to here. I just come from Westburg where I work at Main Health as an endpoint architect, which is way too many words to say. I design computers that we use at Main Health. I don't speak for Main Health, but just to give you an idea, I know a few things about this technology. Now that I've barreled through that, is there anything left out, Bob? Are there any questions anybody has?
Go ahead, Bob.
I do have a question. You were going to make a recommendation to the Legislative Committee, considering the legislation regarding the structure of the franchise fees.
Yeah, so there's a few different technologies for broadband. The two big ones are cable and then there's fiber optic. So what we're going to suggest is that if you structure a franchise fee around cable, that run at one rate, probably higher. A franchise fee for something like fiber optic internet would be lower because what you get is a better technology and an incentive for companies to deploy that. Fiber is the backbone of every other internet technology out there. So what we want to do is incentivize getting that end product, that product that's going to age super well, to your house. Once you have fiber optics up in the pole, they last for a very long time. You know, there's always damage from trees falling over and wind, but the speeds you can achieve over that medium are hundreds of times over what you see advertised even now, even commercially. So if you can get that done once, it's done, it sits there, the total cost of ownership is lower. And, you know, individuals, towns, businesses are all going to be in a much better place to compete. When we're all done, if we got everything we wanted, we want Waldorf not just to be wired, but lit up with fiber at every doorstep. This is a step towards that goal. And a step towards incentivizing businesses to do that. We can't just ask for this for free. This is something that people need to buy, people need to put out there. This is a way to work with businesses that are paying people, a lot of them that live in Waldorf, to build these kinds of products out. That idea would need to be sort of, you know, workshopped and set up at a granular level. But at a real, real high level, that's what we'd be doing. The more advanced technologies would have a lower franchise fee, but we would also have more targets to collect that from. If you look at an internet bill now, there is no franchise fee. There is one on cable. I don't know how many people in here subscribe to TV, but cable, year over year, regardless of carrier, is losing subscribers. Meaning towns are losing that resource that that fee is charged on. At some point, these companies are only going to deliver data. And you need to catch up to that before it passes you.
Is there any other questions, Select Board? Seth?
No. Just because it's a hot topic right now, would you care to just make a comment for the public edification about the chatter about Starlink being a viable alternative, which...
Oh, Starlink's amazing. So the short version of...
Compared to fiber. For sure, communities like Waldorf.
Nothing is better than fiber to your house. Wire is always faster than air. If you have nothing, you can only get cellular internet. It's a great option. If you have nothing, you can get Starlink. Starlink's pretty impressive. It is in its early stages. It's very much in what they call beta. It's satellite-based, not like the old-style satellite internet. It's also very much new and they are not done building it. Where it works, it works very well. I couldn't tell you that it will work at every home. I can tell you when you can get it. It's, I think, a $500 install and then about $100 a month, which if you look at a regular broadband bill, isn't that far off the mark. I'd also tell you to do your research on that and read up for you. It looks impressive so far. It's brand new. When you deal with anything in space, it's going to take longer, but Starlink is doing some impressive things compared to cellular or previously known like HughesNet and things like that. It's a different animal. It's very impressive.
Is it your opinion we should really focus on, as a community, on fiber?
I think, so if I got my way, speaking just as myself, we should have fiber everywhere. Fiber is what you feed major businesses with. Starlink feeds their access points with fiber and then that goes up into the sky. That's what everything goes over. Fiber is a piece of glass that you shoot a laser at. It's got a bunch of cool words in it that are all from the future, but it's really the state of the art. Fiber is the thing that's going to improve. Those transceivers are the things that are there improving to get faster speeds up and down everywhere.
Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? No more?
So LD 790 is to fund this, right?
Partially. It's also about...
So the general taxpayer of the state of Maine will be funding it whether he's using it or not.
Correct. Much like we do now.
No, if you don't use it, you don't fund it.
No, I mean as far as different things being funded.
We fund a lot of things that we don't use, yeah.
And that's a fair question and a fair argument. I bet we could go on for hours, which I would be open to do. I know we're pressed for time tonight. I'm pretty easy to find and would love to talk to you at length.
Do we want to do...
Are you going to authorize...
I would make a motion to authorize Ruben Mahar to speak on behalf of the Select Board in support of LD 4920 along the lines of what he told us this evening.
You'll also receive an email, I think I've sent one already, but you'll know what I'm going to say before it's said.
What date is the testimony?
Depends on when you sign up.
That's true.
Yeah. So it's really, it's in Ruben's court as to when to offer. There is a date beyond which he's not eligible to offer it, so it's probably better to do it sooner than later.
Okay.
Should just be written testimony then, probably?
Yeah, I mean if there's an opportunity to speak, I will. I expect it will probably be now then. If I'm able to call in or attend something, I will. With my job and the tasks I have, that's unlikely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? You're up there, Katie?
Aye.
Okay. Just checking.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add something?
Sure.
This all came about because Julie picked up on the LD and shot it over to Ruben.
Yep.
I tried.
You guys are a talented group.
And Ruben's on our...
Communications and Technology Committee.
Oh, I should open with that. Yeah, I'm the chair of the Communications and Technology Committee, so...
Makes sense, but...
Yep, absolutely. Cool. Sounds good. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Old business.
Relay Power. Max.
Max? Relay Power?
Yep.
What do we have?
The last month, I was in front of the Select Board showing the memorandum of understanding with Relay Power. They're the group working with Sincarfa who's doing the solar farm over on Controversy Lane. That was approved on January 20th of this year. I know that there were some comments from the Select Board last meeting. The MOU has been tweaked to include the 15% for savings in all promotional material, definition of what a qualified signup is, language to say that we are not tied into the agreement and if another proposal was to come forward, we can accept that. And I think that was it. There might be a fourth item that Bob will correct me on. I've made the tweaks. Relay Power's fine with it. And they provided that, as well as some other questions that I've received from the Select Board for the past month. All I'm here tonight is to say, please make a decision on it. I do have Katie Rooney and Neil Potter from Relay Power here if there are any other questions from the Select Board or public. So that's me.
Are you all set? Because you had a lot of questions about it, Bob.
I do. Yeah.
Katie, Neil, are you still there?
What?
Not you, Katie. Different Katie.
Katie Rooney.
There she is. She's on the screen.
Yeah.
Yep.
I had a couple of questions and I guess reservations about the Relay Power arrangement. Because there are other companies now that are offering incentives to sign up for residential solar. Yours is interesting because you're offering $100 per signup to the town. And there's been discussion about taking that $100 per signup and allocating it to our Community Navigator Fund, which I, you know, is a great idea. I guess, I guess one of the reservations I have is that you have not defined the rates in the agreement. You describe it as a credit, a 15% reduction in the bill. And we all know that PUC rates defines the rates that are charged in Maine. But we're talking about a 15-year agreement here. And we know that your source of solar, your source of power ultimately is free. At some point, you'll get these panels up and they'll accept the energy from the sun and you'll recover your investment. And then from then on out, it's all bread and butter for you folks. But the residents don't seem to get anything out of that. I'm familiar with other agreements that have defined the rates, at least for the first six years. So people know what they're going to be charged. That's one of the reservations I have. And the other one I've let you know about, and that is that if someone moves out of the service area, the expectation is that they will find a replacement customer. And I think that expectation goes on for 60 days max, or is it 90? Something like that. During which time, the person who signed up and is moving is expected to foot the bill. And then after that period expires, the provider foots the bill. I just would appreciate your clarifying those two points if you could.
Katie, Neil, could one of you respond to that?
Neil, you're muted. One second.
Thanks so much for making some time for us here. We're really excited at the prospects here. And congratulations and thanks for being part of the clean energy revolution by hosting a solar farm there in town. You know, it sounded to me like there was a question about the rate, like the rates and the 15% discount. And the second piece sounded like there was a question about moving and finding a replacement customer. Is that right?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, yeah, these are really good clarifying questions. I think, I think we may have addressed these and I'm not sure if you have that in front of you. There was a number of questions that Matt sent over that we provided written responses to as a clarification. So it might be helpful to have that in front, but I'm also happy to explain it here in person. So the discount does work differently than what most people are used to. A lot of folks are used to a, what's third-party or competitive supply, which gives you, this is going to be the rate that you're paying for your electricity. Community solar works differently. Community solar really mimics rooftop solar. And so what's happening is, instead of being on your roof, your meter is connected to the farm through the account number. And so the, in talking to each customer and seeing how much electricity they've used over the last year, we can size the system and say, for example, subscribe somebody to 20 panels, 20 solar panels to cover their needs. Now, of course, as the sun's shining and the farm is producing electricity, there's something called virtual net meter. And the laws that have been thankfully passed and signed allow for, allow for these, allow for credits to be produced. These are on-bill credits that are produced at the farm and are then put on the bill. Now, they're not, these are credits that you're then paying a discount for. So you can kind of look at it like, if you have a bill that's $100 and the farm produces $100 worth of credits, you're only paying $85 for that, for that portion. So essentially, it's not dealing with the rates. The rate does not come into play at all. It's just dealing with the production of the farm. And the rate is then going to be guaranteed because those credits that are placed on your bill are always going to be less than, less than face value. I can pause there.
Does that answer your question, Bob?
Does that...
It answers the question, sure. I understand how the billing works, but at some point, somebody's paying you dollars and cents for their electricity. And it's your unit rate per kilowatt hour that's going to determine what they pay after accepting the 15 credits that you give them. And it's those rates I'm trying to get to.
Neil, Katie, did you hear that?
I couldn't quite make that out, guys. I apologize.
You really got out of...
Okay. If my understanding is correct, you're going to be standing in for the utility. You're going to be producing the electricity and billing your customers for it. You're going to be billing them in dollar amounts based on the usage at a rate per kilowatt hour. You're also going to give them a credit.
Okay, good.
Kilowatt hour credit of 15% of their consumption. So they're still paying money for their electricity, but they're getting a discount of 15% of what they use. But you're still translating the net amount of users, that amount used into a dollar sum.
Yes.
You're going to use a kilowatt hour rate in order to do that.
The, so, okay, so a couple of things. This is good. This is definitely getting into the finer points of it, which I appreciate. So one, for the farm, it's kind of backwards from the way that you're used to thinking. You're actually not, the credits aren't, and you're not buying for your consumption. What you're paying for is the production at the farm. So it's a little bit different there. The kilowatt hour rate that is set by the state and the utilities, and I'm not sure exactly what the department is that regulates that, sets a kilowatt hour rate for how those kilowatt hour credits are then produced. That rate can fluctuate, just like, you know, your supply or your delivery can fluctuate, you know, from winter to summer, from year to year. The bottom line is that through all of that and regardless of all of that, the production that your portion of the farm is creating... the production that your portion of the farm is, is creating over the term of the agreement is always going to be placed on your bill and you're always going to be getting that added discount. So that's, that's really how, how things are guaranteed. The other thing to note is, of course, that there's, to opt into it, there's, there's no cost at all, right? So there's, there's not an investment that's being made. Your, your just being part of the solution and, and saving for, for that term.
Thank you.
Does it, does that help?
It, it helps explain what you're doing, yes.
Okay. And is, is there further concern that we can help address?
I was actually going to say, just in the sake of time, were there any other questions from anyone else before we keep going? We have Seth.
Shall I talk into that?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Seth Hall, resident of Waldaburrow, active solar investor, very interested in distributed generation. Could you explain to us whether yours is a, a true subscription model as opposed to a true community solar model, the savings of the latter of which are typically much higher? They are an equity investment by the consumer who has to put up money, money upfront. I think this might have been part of what Bob was trying to get to. It's a subtle difference that most people don't understand, but has very major long-term cost implications for the ultimate consumer or community solar member. Are you a true community solar provider, or are you a subscription service like the vast bulk of new providers in Maine?
Yeah, this, this is a subscription service. So we've, we've, we've done, we've done both. There's, in the early, in the early days of relay, you doing an ownership community solar really was the way to go. The, the, and it was really the only option. You could, you know, you can kind of look at it, and I didn't catch your name here, I apologize, but you can kind of look at it as an analog to rooftop solar, right? Initially, you know, anybody who could afford a system and had a good roof, they could buy their system. Eventually, you know, there were only so many folks that were in a position to do that, so the industry changed a bit and it evolved to, to go to, you know, in, in rooftop solar, we go to a lease or a PPA. This, this is kind of an analog to that. So it is, it is a subscription, and really the only way to, to go to scale and to meet net zero goals in the climate crisis that we're in is to be able to offer this to, to more and more people. And the, the ownership model is great for folks that are, are in that position, but the vast majority are not, and this is how we're able to reach more folks.
I guess we should leave it there, from my perspective.
Does that help?
That answers the question.
So just because there's a budget committee meeting, I don't know, is there any other big burning question, or can we go forward on the vote for the MOU?
Can I make one comment not related to the details of the cost and stuff to the Select Board? I think this is really important for the town. We're in the new era of distributed generation, which is really exploding, as we all know, around the state, and it's going to explode more as electrification of transportation and the grid. Just the same way we're enjoying it from the transfer station, all of us are going to be enjoying that more and more and more. The subscription model is a, an investor-based model largely to keep all those potential savings in the hands of the investors. Compared to a community solar like Barbara Boardman down in Dr. Powell Road, where she and the other owner members actually derive all the benefit. It'll be similar to when we discuss, I hope, whether we buy our solar array after the six-year tax revenue, PPA agreement expires. Mostly, I would offer the opinion that I don't think the town should be in the business of sponsoring particular vendors for the residents of the town. Offering endorsements, that's not town business. I don't, that's a mixing of government and private enterprise that I think is inappropriate. It's a little different than a Ruben's franchise fee because they're a monopolistic competitor. And we don't have two cable companies, for example, so we should milk that. But this is very new, and I hope that the Select Board will not vote to endorse or even sign a memorandum of understanding, memorandum of understanding with this vendor, because it's much too early to do that in the state of Maine. LD17, 1711, just passed a year and a half ago, two years ago. Things are moving extremely fast, and if you commit yourself to one vendor like this, you shut off your ability to be competitive in the future, and it's going to be much more competitive in the future. It just is. So I hope you'll think seriously about at least tabling this for a while and watching how the industry and other companies like this come to us and try to educate us more and involve us more. I think it's premature to sign up with a vendor, and I don't think it's the town's business to pick vendors.
I don't think we have anyways. That was part of Bob's questions, is we're not exclusive.
No, you said non-exclusive.
Understand, but we do offer implicit endorsement.
No, no.
It, it will be in the papers. They will report that Waldaburrow did this with this vendor. Just, I'm encouraging caution. It's premature. Thank you.
I don't think we're subscribing to...
If we're putting it on our website or using our website as a portal, and that's the proposal to us, to use the town website as a proposal, as a portal for people to sign up for subscription services to this arrangement, there has to be a disclaimer on the website that we do not endorse or support the arrangement. We're simply offering ourselves as a vehicle for people who don't have the money to put up front to make an investment in solar, which can be substantial, but who still wish to avail themselves of the 15% credit that they would realize on their bills. It is a non-exclusionary, sorry, it is a non-exclusive agreement. And if someone walked in the door tomorrow and said, can we use your website to do, to advertise ours? My response would be absolutely, you're welcome to, because we do not have an exclusive arrangement with anybody. And if they're offering a 20% credit, more power to them. But what it does demonstrate is the interest of the town in entertaining offers like this, not endorsing them, but making them available to those, those residents who are interested in taking advantage of them. Not to do so puts people who don't have the money to make the upfront investment at a disadvantage. I think this gives them an opportunity to make their own decision in whatever their, whatever their decision parameters are, either to go ahead or not to go ahead. So, but I, I don't think the town wants to associate itself in any way, shape, or form with the business arrangement that, that relay is proposing to the citizens of the town. That's my, that's why I vote for this. That would be my reason for voting for it. That it's non-exclusive, that we don't support the business arrangement, that we're simply acting as a portal to let people make up their own minds.
Anybody else on the Select Board have anything?
I think it's okay. We're offering it to the community. That's what we're doing, is just offering it to the community.
Colonel? You got anything?
No.
Katie, you have anything?
No, I'm all set.
Seth?
I'd just like to respond very briefly. The town's taking $100 per subscriber as a gift or whatever it's going to be called. I haven't seen the arrangement or the proposal. I don't know the details. That suspiciously sounds like a quid pro quo. And, and I think people would be fair if they said, oh, well, the town's generating this revenue stream from this commitment, this agreement with this vendor, this one vendor, whether the other vendors come up in the future or not. And basically, that means an endorsement. I don't know how you can avoid that. If, if there wasn't any money, I think Bob was right. If there wasn't any money involved for the town, it'd be much more neutral. But this is that, you're proposing a revenue source from a particular vendor that the Select Board chooses. That's choosing markets, and that's anti-capitalist. That's not what government should be doing, in my opinion.
Thank you.
I think, could, could I just respond here real quick? And I know, I know you guys have a busy night here.
Yes.
I, I, I can hear the passion that's involved here, and I, I respect it, and I think that's great. You know, our, our goal here is, our goal here is to, essentially, we want, we want to work, we want to work with communities, with municipalities in order to make this available to their residents. You know, the only way that, that we can green the grid is by, is, is by increasing people's awareness of it. And, you know, doing that with, with communities and municipalities is, is, is just a far better way than a company going out and hiring, you know, a number of high-pressure salespeople that are going to try to sign people up in a grocery store parking lot or at their door in 90 seconds. You know, we, we take, we take the time with, with every customer to walk them through. If they want, they can sign up on their own, or they can take 30 to 60 minutes to talk with, with one of our specialists to see if it's right for them. So, you know, in, instead of taking the approach of a, a high-pressure sales thing just happening all over the state right now, you know, we've kind of looked at the acquisition, the customer acquisition piece and saying, you know, we pick up fundraisers for the town and use it that way in a more positive way.
I, I just think we should point out, too, this is who Sincarfa chose, not, this has nothing to do really with the town. This was, they're the chosen. This is not anything to do with our solar farm. This is the solar farm on the Reed Farm.
Right.
Not the Reed Farm, Controversy.
I'm sorry, Controversy Lane.
And, and we don't know when it's actually going to come on stream.
You have some time here.
Yeah.
So maybe we could...
And the solar, and the solar farm on the Reed, on the solar farm on the Reed Farm, they never came to us, so... They didn't ask for our help to sell their product, so... I mean, it wasn't like there's nobody else out there. They were out there. They've already done it, so...
They've done it with commercial properties.
They just didn't come to us to ask us, they didn't come to us to ask us to help them promote it, so...
If I may, there, I believe they're offering their, their commercial customers something like 30% discount.
My point exactly. Thank you, Bob.
Can we, can we maybe table this or vote it, because we have budget committee waiting?
I, I have no problem with doing either.
Will somebody make a motion?
So, let's move it along. Do you want to, do you want to vote on it tonight, or do you want to table it? I move we table this discussion until...
Is there a second? Another meeting. I'll hold second round. Katie, Katie's second. Yep. All right. Any more discussion? Haring done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're moving along. All right. Next on the agenda, the Volunteers of America MOU for potential consideration.
I do not have it. It is under their legal review.
Okay, so...
So you're going to have to hold it. And I'm putting it on the agenda so that...
It stays...
It stays current, it's on there, and that's why it says potential.
Okay. So do you just want to put it on items for the next agenda?
Correct.
All right. I guess that's the next thing, is items for the next meeting. And this will be on there.
And I have another one of these for overlay. I have an overlay agreement for Route 1 for the next agreement, for the next meeting.
And another road.
Correct. From the DOT.
Cool. Is that it? Anybody have anything, Bob? Colonel?
No.
Jan? Katie?
No, thank you.
Okay. Does somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Haring done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We're going to be moving into our budget meeting now.